That's exactly. Okay, we're live. Good morning, let's call this meeting the order Rankin County Board of Supervisors, October fifteenth. Just a few minutes after nine o'clock at this time, I'd like to have Mr. Craig Slay. Would you do our invocation for us, please, sir?
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, thank you so much. We pause now to acknowledge your presence here with us today. Father, invoke your blessing on our time. To thank you, Lord, for the many blessings that you've already bestowed on our county. Father, we thank you for the privilege of service. I thank you for each of these gentlemen who give their time, their talents, Father, their energy, all of which comes from you. And they give it back, Father, in service to this community. I thank you, Father, for those who are going to take the responsibility of service. And I pray, Father, that you will encourage and uplift them. Father, that you will surround them with wisdom and discernment, that you will give them people who can come alongside, Father, and give them guidance and assistance and encouragement. Father, I thank you for the presence of many here today who by their presence are indicating their appreciation for the function of government. Father, I thank you for the privilege that we have to come together voluntarily, Father, and to participate in the governance of our community. For what a wonderful privilege it is, and I thank you for the men and women who have given everything to preserve the rights that we have to function in this kind of government. Thank you, Lord, Father, and we thank you and bless you. In your name we pray.
Amen. Thank you, Greg. At this time, before we move on, what I'd like to do is make a few recognitions. We've got U.S. Congressman Greg Harper with two G's. And we also have Representative Powell, Brent Powell. There you go. Hey, Brent. District Attorney Michael Guest. I saw you. There you go. And Assistant District Attorney Marty Miller. We thank y'all for attending today.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to add an item to our agenda.
Okay. What would be the item to add to the agenda?
The appointment of District Two Supervisor.
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison to add this item to the agenda. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the motion reads to appoint Rodney Keith as Supervisor for District Two Rankin County to fill the unexpired term of the Honorable Wood Brown.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, Rodney, if you'll step forward, and Judge Shirley. And Judge Shirley, I apologize, I should have recognized you also, so you get your recognition right up front. So, this time, we'll have the oath of office. Chuck, you can get all those pictures. Is that camera working?
If you raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I Rodney A. Keith.
I Rodney A. Keith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And obey the laws thereof.
Obey the laws thereof.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
From holding the office.
From holding the office.
As Supervisor District Two.
As Supervisor District Two.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
My own ways.
Thank you. And I thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
My board, sir. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And the reason why Supervisor Rodney Keith will not be sitting at the table this morning, we have just a little bit of housekeeping we still have left. We've got a surety bond, which is in the making, which will take approximately two days, I think, something like that, according to our county administrator, to get all the paperwork done and everything. As soon as that happens, he will be at our next meeting, be able to attend the meeting, and also be able to participate as a supervisor. So, thank you guys very much for being here, and if you want to stay and enjoy all of our agenda, the items that we've got, I understand that some of you do have some places to go, so. Congressman, thank you very much. Are you headed to, you headed to Washington, Congressman?
Not this week.
Okay, well.
Where I want to be in Mississippi.
There you go. Well, thank y'all very much, and Representative Powell, thank you very much. Y'all take care. Okay, at this time, we have old business minutes approval from September twenty-nine, two thousand fourteen, October six, two thousand fourteen.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. At this time, we have consent agenda item.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Johnson.
Hey, I want to take one item off of there.
Okay.
On our.
Okay. Which item is it? The whole personnel or just one?
No, just one dealing with the multi-purpose.
Okay.
I think we have some discussions in the executive session dealing with that.
Okay, so we'll take the one off of, for the multi-purpose building. Okay. That could be in executive session, correct? Okay. So, with all that being said, are you, are you good with that?
I make a motion with which item?
Multi-purpose item on personnel.
Was A, B, C, D.
That would be under three.
All right, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda and let list item three.
On the multi-purpose, okay. Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. This time, we have, okay, since the spelling's wrong, but that's okay.
Elicchon.
Elicchon. Election of Vice President. Election of Vice President of Board of Supervisors.
I make a motion to appoint, I mean.
Supervisor.
Nominate Jared Morrison as our Vice President.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions?
When do we rotate out, President?
I know Ms. Janice was gonna do the, I believe it's like February, March, somewhere around there.
Somebody's gonna have to get down on the tile floor and figure it out.
No, I got it in the.
That's where Mr. Brown came up with that.
You've got, you've got the numbers?
Do we have to have that part of the minutes?
No, it's already, it's already processed.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Gotcha. Okay, so I've got a motion and a second. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Got Ms. Judy Fortenberry, Tax Collector. Before you get started, did you get my text?
I did, and I will.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
You have before you, you're my required end-of-the-year reports on our collections. It's just to be recorded in the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. John Sullivan, Tax Assessor. Good morning.
Good morning. I think we can handle all these items in one motion. These are voided tax sales. They should have been coded tax exempt, the property matured to the state. The reason this transpires is because we set our rolls in July. The tax sale is held in August. By the time the paperwork's sent to the state, the Secretary of State's office, you're into the next year, so you're basically two years behind.
Right.
The Chancellor Clerk Larry Swales and Judy Fortenberry do a wonderful job, along with our office and staff, to keep these out, but because of the timing and the way things mature from the state, we miss some.
Right.
So, these are, these are all the same thing.
Okay.
What are these? Are these like?
These are properties in the tax sale that nobody would buy.
Really?
And then it goes to the state.
So, we had some that wouldn't, that weren't called?
Oh, yeah. We usually have, well, Judy, you need to speak on this. I don't know exactly how many that mature to the state, but there's quite a few here.
And this is the same thing I was talking to you about last time, when it matured to the state, it goes to the state the next year, and then that third year when it certifies, for some reason, our Delta system releases that after it certifies the state and goes into the tax sale. We're talking with them about trying to get that correct, but it just slips through every time.
And we, we try to give the information to Judy so she can flag them and not sell them in the tax sale.
Yeah.
But you have to have the Chancellor Clerk, Tax Collector, and Tax Assessor working together to try.
To make sure and get them all.
Because everything's happened at different times, and why it's done that way, I can't explain that, but that is the reason why this happens.
So.
And the property that goes through the tax sale three times, has to go through three times.
Reboot.
It goes, well, it goes to the state, but the thing about it, when it goes back to the state, by the time they give us telling it that has matured to the state, it allowed to be August or September. We don't know when they're gonna send us the paperwork, so we attempt to keep up with it without the state.
So, is, do we foresee any more than just these three, or is that just right now?
No, you will have some every year around this time of year.
Right, but I'm talking about right now, as far as this year. That's.
We could have some more, but the other ones should be era.
Okay.
Other than tax sale.
Right.
But you could. It depends on when it matured to the state, and if they get the paperwork to us.
Gotcha.
To put it in the state's name.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve A, B, and C.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bridget Herring, Purchasing Clerk. Good morning.
I have one item this morning. I'm requesting authority to advertise bids for the semi-annual asphalt and supplies for the unit system.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dale Westbrook, Road Manager. Good morning.
Good morning. I have one item, discussion and potential action on the purchase of software and services with City Tech Systems for data management for the road department. This is the work order. It's also helps us manage our assets. It's got several, it's got a lot of options to it. It helps us with managing our rolling stock and some other stuff in this particular. And this is the, the system that most, the road manager that I've talked to, this is what they've.
What they've gone to?
This is what they've gone to.
How user-friendly is that? What, whenever you've talked to them, how user-friendly is that, Dale?
They say it is. Now, you know, it looks, you know, when you just look at it, for me, it looks fairly complicated.
Have we, have we looked at another one? Have we looked at another one?
I, well, I've talked to them about another one, and some of the guys that use them, the road managers and all, it just wasn't anything close to, you know, what they thought we were needing, you know, with what's coming up with the MAP twenty-one and some other stuff. This is all on state contract, so you don't have to bid it out.
Right. What's the, what's the price tag on that for state contract?
Thirty-eight thousand. It's worth thirty-eight one.
Is that per year, is that just a one-time?
That's a one-time.
And then there's a maintenance included in that, but the next year, there will be a maintenance of around five thousand.
Right.
And there had been a, a part of it which y'all had asked about, about people being able to look onto.
Right.
I think he said that would be an additional charge of three thousand, but the way that works is, much like our new website will, the only one that can view any of the information is if that person actually enters their work order.
Gotcha.
Online.
So, they'll be able to follow their own.
They can, but nobody else can get in there. They can follow it by entering it into the system.
Wonderful. Okay, so there, it's really not wide open to everyone's, just basically if they put that in, then they can follow their own, what the, you know, what the status of it is.
If they do that, and are they gonna be able to make comments on there?
I don't.
Like, when are you gonna get to my work order? I've been dragging you, you know, this, it wasn't done well.
Well, the good, and I understand what you're saying. I think the good thing about it is, if they're not able to make comments on there, at least then they could actually call their supervisor and say, okay, here's, here's where it's at, as far as flagging and things like that. Maybe we can tweak it where it would not be able to make comments and stuff, where it's, but it wouldn't be for public use, though.
Well, it would be if they, if they entered it in.
Not for, not for the rest of the public.
What is it you're wanting to do?
Basically, to give us, give us and Dale, the road department, and everyone a snapshot of where work orders are at, instead of, and the antiquated paper form. If you hadn't seen my office, I'm just about.
So, what part does that entail the public?
Basically allows them to, from what I understand, allows them to be able to enter their own work orders.
So, you want the public to be able to enter their own work orders?
Mm-mm.
If, if basically, if they want to, if, you know, they're, if they want to do it, they can. I don't figure that's gonna be much. I figure we're still gonna get mainly, you know.
Call-ins.
Call, but they could go in. We'd be a link on our website, and they don't actually go into our system and enter the work order. They enter it on a page that would then have to be picked up by whoever is doing Dale's work. They would see the name, the address, the contact information, the road, and then that person would enter it in, but whoever emailed it in, whoever wrote it in, could come back and look at just theirs to see the date that it was called in. Then if he had scheduled, it would, it would go to a schedule date, and they could see all the actions that had taken place on that particular item.
The one thing, and Dale, you jump in here at any time, how this is gonna affect, how you feel about that, because I know, you know, work orders are, a lot of times have to be prioritized, obviously.
Right.
But everybody knows that, I mean, somebody, a lot of people think theirs is the most highest priority, which is maybe very small in the big picture, or not that everybody's work order's not important. And so, how is that gonna affect, how will this, having this accessibility to do a work order, public enter it, and plus follow it, how's it gonna bother, affect you, or is it gonna be a problem or a burden for you to be constantly getting, I'm afraid they'll be responding back on that same thing? They can still go back and go make some comment about it, couldn't they?
Yes. And it's just, I don't, to give you an answer, I don't really know. It's just something we'd have to work through. We'll have to, you know, we, as far as giving them an exact schedule, it would be really hard to do.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but it, I really can't tell you because I haven't used it. I mean, it's just.
I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, because I don't want it to be, the whole thing sounds good. That's the only little glitz in it that I'm not so sure would be good for you.
Yes, I understand, and I've thought about that, and I don't, you know, that was something, when we first started talking about this, that wasn't part of the equation, as far as them making their own work orders and following that closely. It was that if they would call in, we would be able to access their work order without having to spend half a day or two days digging through a stack of all of them or whatever to try to find it. And that was, you know, that was the reason we first started with this.
Right.
It's been, I've been looking at this about.
I like that part. I'm just, I'm just a little.
Well, that was.
I'm liking that also. I guess my question, too, was what benefit do you see, talking to other road managers, because I know you're out there, you know, you go to the, all the different conferences and stuff. What benefits would you see that from your aspect? How would that help the road department? Do you think that that would hinder, or any part?
You're talking about the work order part?
Someone entering their own?
Well, as far as what, if we were to approve this, would that help you or hinder? What are you thinking?
I think it would help. It's got a lot of management tools that have nothing to do with work orders in it.
Right.
It helps with inventory control. We've also got the MAP twenty-one that's coming up with our signs and other things that we were gonna have to start keeping records on as to when they were put up and when they were checked, and this, and that goes back, and that's gonna affect our liability insurance.
Right.
I've talked to the providers, and that was something we talked about last year. They don't know exactly when, you know, or how, you know, nobody knows because it hadn't, it's not in effect, and it, you know, it hadn't went through its kind of growing cycle.
Right.
But it's all coming, it's gotta be tracked and kept up with. This lets me track my inventory, what, you know, what we're doing, where we're doing it, you know, to kind of give us a better idea of what we're doing on some of these roads, and, you know, maybe what needs to be done in the future. Hopefully, you know, we're, we're doing what we need to do now, you know, like we are, but it should, should be able to pull up data and use it. We probably got the data everywhere around here.
It's just not all.
Just to get it, you know, without having to, you know, make.
Dig through.
Ten different phone calls, and then try to put it all together. It's supposed to be kind of a cohesive thing that, that you can pull back information that you need to make some decisions as to how you want to, you know, budgeting and what work and such like.
Okay.
Also, it's not just a work order.
Right.
System, not just for a work order.
So, you said it's more as a benefit than a hindrance, I guess, and, because I'm not trying to push anything.
He didn't think it was a benefit to it.
Well, you know, he may have been doing this because, you know, some supervisors want to see, you know, something move into the, into the century where, you know, where we're actually not having to do a lot of paperwork.
You know, I think we can get that accomplished for a lot less than thirty-eight thousand dollars.
And we possibly could.
And also, when you vote for this, you, you understand you're voting for another employee that's gonna be hired.
Well, and that's, I, I think what he's trying to do right now is just discussion, so I don't know of the potential action. I do see, you know, that we, we don't need possible action on, but at least we're getting more detail, and we may want to have, you know, a presentation come from them to see exactly what this thing would benefit for the county, so.
I don't see why we'd have to hire another person.
Not if he feels like he can handle it himself.
I mean, the phone call, the phone call's gonna be generated.
It's the other data.
Ninety-five percent of the time.
It's the other part.
And Lynn could enter it in as, as his assistant, I guess.
The public access to it is a separate piece of the equation. It doesn't have to be done.
Right.
Right up front. It is an additional cost, and it could be left off.
Right.
For an indefinite period of time, until he feels comfortable with the system, you know, sees what it's gonna do.
And then, if he feels right.
And later down the road, add that in.
Because it still would be added in, no matter what, and that way you can still track it. That's the, that's the key factor.
That was my whole, my whole question. I was questioning whether it's gonna help him or not. I was questioning, was it gonna?
Open up some.
Open up a problem for him on the other side.
Yeah, it could, I mean, you know.
Well.
As far as them being, you know, the public, just inundate us with.
And I know we just got in the new fiscal year, and it, it was approved in the budget and everything like that, so, you know, if we do still have some concerns from some of the supervisors, it may not be a bad idea. Or this, is this a local company that? There may be some working with, you know, if you can get with Laura or whoever, and also maybe Rusty, see if there's other ones that possibly, as Mr. Bishop said, there may be some other ones that are equal or even better at a cheaper price.
Well, not only that, you know, during our discussions during the budget, we found out that other departments already have inventory program running. Maybe we could use theirs.
Right.
You know, and, and start keeping inventory, or just try to use our staff in a better way to create some, you know, spreadsheets to help us maintain some of this stuff.
And there's.
I guess the question there would be, can, could we incorporate, you know, inventory's one thing, but can you incorporate what he's talking about as far as keeping up with the maintenance schedule and the road, you know, that? I just don't know. That, but those are questions, I guess, could be answered at time that you're referring to, Greg.
Right. And we can get a committee, put Walter on that, make sure that he's good to go. So.
I made the most.
But. Any more questions? I don't, like I said, I, I didn't really foresee a potential action on this, because I didn't know that, and I don't think that you really was asking for. But, again, I don't know that this is not gonna be a great thing for, I just need to, we, I think we need to see more meat on it and see exactly what it's going to do, benefit the county, and if it's user-friendly. That's where, I mean, you can get anything you want, but if it's not user-friendly, it's just a piece, you know, it's just something out there that we're paying for, so.
I think it's something we're, we're gonna, you're going, you know, we're going to.
Exactly.
And you're gonna eventually have to have, whether this is the exact.
Exactly.
System model for us, I can begin to say, but I think it's, it's going to that, as everything else is going to, where you got somebody to keep up your data.
Quickly.
Yep.
Right, so he doesn't have to go in there and go to the, to the vaults, to back there to find out everything.
All right.
Thank, thank you, Dale. Let's, I guess, just keep on working with Ms. Laura and Rusty and.
You gonna have some, we gonna have somebody else to talk to us about it, or?
Yeah, I think.
Where are we with it?
Let's, let's let Laura and.
I don't think we need to let it die. We need to go ahead and know.
Exactly.
Decide one way or the other.
Let's work on it and get that possibly within the next, not by next meeting, within the next month or so. That way, we've got some time to look at different options.
Can you have them come by and give us a demonstration?
Sure.
Can you have them come by and give us a demonstration?
Sure. I'm sure we can set it.
At a work session or something?
I think that'd be great. That way, we can see how easy this thing is going to work and what benefits it's going to do.
Get a couple of them.
There's no question.
Ask a comparison.
Right.
Something needs to be done and we're going to head in this direction. I just don't know exactly this is a, I guess it's unsure among the board whether this is a clear way to go.
Well, with both of them and the attorney jump in there with the law, with Rusty, the four of them, I think that we can basically have them set something up where we could actually see some different presentations for sure.
All right.
All right. Well, moving on then, we've got Mr. Charles Parker, County Consulting Engineer. I think he may have some exciting news for one of us anyway, for sure.
Well, I don't know. It all depends. Uh, first item that I have on the agenda is our old Highway forty-nine drainage improvements. This morning I'm recommending approval of pay request number three. Thornton Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of one hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-five cents and requesting authority to issue that check.
So moved.
Second, got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item I have on the agenda is our old fanning road project. And this morning I'm recommending approval of pay request number twenty-two to Southern Rock LLC in the amount of eight hundred twenty-eight thousand, five hundred forty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents and requesting authority to issue that check.
Let's approve. Second, got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? What's, uh, and I know you hear it all the time. What is the drop dead deadline around finishing that project?
Well, we're hoping to be through by the end of the year.
End of the year.
I suspect.
This year?
Now you're pinning me down, sir.
That's what I'm trying to do.
I didn't want to quote the year. Uh, it may be a little bit after the first of the year, but that's the general goal. We don't have, as you referred to, a drop dead date, say be through or else.
Right.
It just doesn't work.
Well, you said the end of the year and then you went into the first of the year. So
In that general.
Tell me it's fourteen or fifteen or sixteen.
And that, and I didn't give you the year. No, sir. That was intentional.
Okay.
But, but our goal.
You word it this way, the end to the beginning of next year, end of this year to the beginning of next year. That's pretty much covered.
Whew.
Well, I didn't really want to be tied down like that, but anyway.
Mr. Rodney Keith, welcome to Supervisor Row. Okay. Do I have a motion in a second? Got any more questions?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Buster, I, I want to ask you, um, we were in a meeting the other day.
Yes, sir.
And Transportation Commissioner brought up a issue about all of our red lights out there.
Yes.
He was concerned and if it's not all installed correctly, we manned it with a traffic jam.
Timed to.
You talking about an old fanning?
That's correct.
Yeah. Calibration of the lights.
Yes, sir. They will be. I mean, now we're thinking, there again, you, you're talking about the representative of MDOT. MDOT's the one that we went through to get this, all this stuff approved. So.
So basically falls.
We felt comfortable with it, you know. You'll have some people upset because they occasionally go ahead and stop on the old fanning, like it or not.
Well, we just need to make sure the calibration is correct. So we don't have a bottleneck like, it's even worse than what it is now, I guess. That's the main thing.
Yes, sir. No, we feel comfortable that we'll have.
How many do we have adding to the?
I believe there's five out there.
Five total?
I, I believe so. I think we added, I think we had four on the project. We had, we had one non-participating light at, uh, one of the other subdivisions, which means it didn't have federal money.
It was added on?
Yes, sir.
Is that the one that, uh, the Senator, ex-Senator's family lived in?
Yeah, Browder's Woods got it.
Browderwood? Is that the one?
Yeah, Browderwood, Browderwood. Yeah. So anyway, that's the number they will have. And we feel comfortable with them. Once we, once we get them on and functioning, then we'll know a whole lot more about it and y'all may want to run me out of town, but if.
But you feel comfortable we got it under control?
Yes, sir. I do.
Who, who will make the calibration on that? Will you be working with MDOT on that or how does that work?
Yes, sir. They're, they're involved in with, with everything on the project, including the lights.
What I'm saying though is when we, when we do start having calls come to us, who does the?
Oh, we'll have, we'll have MDOT actively involved in that. Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir. They will be active participants.
Okay. Wonderful.
Yes, sir. I feel good about it. Once they're functioning, we'll see. And like I say, you may want to run me out of town on the rail. That's okay. Put a cushion on it. We'll go.
I'll just be happy to see the project end by the end of two thousand fourteen. That would be great.
Two thousand fourteen. Yes, sir. We're trying.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody's looked at it very closely. It's coming along real well.
It's going great.
They are really doing it, doing a number trying to finish that project up.
Okay. Item C?
Item C, Ehrlich Road Extension. I'm recommending approval of pay request number thirteen in the amount of one hundred seventy-eight thousand, one seventy-nine twenty to Joe McGee Construction Company Incorporated and authority to issue that check.
So moved.
Second, motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item I have on the agenda is Scottish Hills, Part Three, Phase One, lots one through thirty-five. Uh, I have on the approval of the final plat and, uh, you'll notice I got a letter of credit there with a blank out beside it. The developer has not furnished the letter of credit. The engineer has furnished his estimate. The engineer's done everything he needs to do. Uh, and he gave me his estimate of forty thousand, six hundred, three dollars and ten cents. But I don't have the letter of credit. So there are two things you can do. You can just take it off the agenda and say, put it on there next month. Uh, these developers are just.
What, what is it with the letters of credit that they drag their feet on that?
They wait the last minute to get them. I mean, now it does take, if you go to the bank, you know, there's certain little procedures you have to go through.
Right.
But they wait the last minute and I harped on it and harped on it and harped on it. And, uh, but the alternative that you can do, uh, is that you can approve that plat contingent
Contingent.
upon receipt of that letter of credit. And you have done that, uh, on occasion, not much, but you have done that in the past.
Right.
So that's, that's a board call, but, uh, I know the developer's anxious. He's got people asking about lots out there, jumping up and down. And, uh, I, I understand that, but, uh, my only, these developers have got to learn by placing, placing, by some of our rules and get stuff into us.
Can you approve it, uh, contingent on this or just, just take it off and wait for the next meeting?
You could, you could approve, in, in my opinion, you could approve this plat this morning, contingent upon receipt of the letter of credit.
And let me ask you a question. If we approve this, is he going to go ahead and move on to do what he needs to do without the letter of credit until he gets it?
No, sir. He better not.
Okay. Gotcha.
Right.
But that gives him, that gives him, uh, there way if it comes in tomorrow or the next week, he doesn't have to keep waiting.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's correct.
I'm all right doing it that way.
That'd be the, in my opinion, the logical.
Right. I know we've done it a couple of times. I'm like you though, I'm.
At some point, we got to get a message to these developers to get your job. Don't come to us crying about, I need it on the next agenda. I'm, I got fourteen buyers waiting. That sounds great. But they need to do their part.
Right.
And this has become sort of.
No, not yet.
All right.
Do I make a motion? Do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Motion by Mr.
Contingent on, get it signed.
Motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item I have on the agenda, and this is probably one the president was referring to about making somebody happy.
That's correct.
Uh, LSRP sixty-one, three. This is, this is our state aid project that involves Old Highway forty-three and Old Highway forty-nine.
Can you say that again?
Yes, sir. Old Highway forty-three and Old Highway forty-nine.
I love you.
Uh, our drainage, you know, we've, we've been kind of stepping along, waiting on our drainage project on Old forty-nine. It's coming along well. They, they've done a good job and, uh, had a schedule there. So I feel confident in as soon as state aid gives us the release to advertise it, the reason I put it on here, didn't want to wait for another board meeting because there's no reason I can't get that authority before the next board meeting. There are about three pieces of paper there morning. Uh, so anyway, I recommend authority to advertise the project.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? I don't know if you're going to get a motion on that. All in favor.
Discussion.
Any discussion at all?
Any discussion on that, Walter?
Hopefully we don't go two-two on this. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Sounded unanimous.
That's unanimous. Congratulations.
Uh, thank you. The last item I have on the agenda is, uh, recommend approval of Central Electric Power Association utility permit um, to install a, uh, power line, buried power line, uh, across Glen's View Drive and between the existing pole and the west side of Glen's View Drive and, excuse me, the northwest corner of Lot Thirty-two in Cowan Creek subdivision, which is out in District Two. Cowan Creek is a subdivision off of Glen's View Drive. So anyway, I recommend approval of that permit.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. Just for, uh, an item of interest, if y'all recall, uh, a good while back, you, you had authorized me to, to scan our subdivision plans, documents and so forth.
Right.
We have completed that and I have delivered the data to Dale. And fortunately, uh, it, it came under what our original estimate, you know, we had talked about possibly thirty thousand dollars and I think the final number was around fifteen. So.
Good deal.
Great.
Anyway, that turned, what we will do in the future, because we're having them going on all the time, is that, uh, I will on occasion scan the ones that have come in since we completed this
Right.
and get the information to you.
Okay. Wonderful. Appreciate that.
Just better information. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, we have Mr. Craig Slade, Board Attorney.
Morning.
Good morning.
First item under my section is the authorization for an additional cost and fee expenditure not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars for our retained counsel, Chris Palmer, uh, to complete all of the amendments to the Rankin County Solid Waste Plan. Let me explain. We, uh, we asked Chris to help us with the amendments to Solid Waste Plan as a result of the request that came from Denali Water. This is the company that requested permission to make application of treated solid waste as a fertilizer product on, uh, on landowners, primarily agricultural uses out in the county in designated locations where they had tentative agreements with that landowner. Uh.
Is this the one you told us we were going to get reimbursed on?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, and we're working on that, but I do, the reason this is before you is because in my opinion, there is an explanation, there could be an explanation for why this would be beyond the purview of a reimbursement. So you need to understand what we're talking about here. Denali's request is to take the existing solid waste management plan and have it brought forward and amended so that it would authorize that particular activity. The placement of treated, treated solid waste from their operations on various pieces of property in Rankin County. We, the county has to amend its solid waste plan to authorize that activity. And then at that point, it gets shipped off to DEQ for all of their regulatory requirements that go along with that. County doesn't regulate that. That's DEQ's purview, but the solid waste management plan has to be amended to allow it first. So that's the process that we've been going through. In the middle of that process, it was discovered that the solid waste management plan has, as it was initially adopted back in ninety-four and brought forward, has been amended a number of times. That process has continued as different users have come online asking for it to be amended to allow certain uses. That has gone on for the last, we'll say, eight to ten years. And in, in that process, DEQ has notified the county that we, there are parts of that amendment process that need to be, the loops need to be closed on. One of those things is that the municipalities within the county have a choice that they have to make with respect to solid waste management. They can either allow themselves to be brought under the county's solid waste management plan or they can have their own. There are two municipalities that have elected to come under the county's solid waste management plan. That means there are five others who are either going their own way or they are claiming to be covered under some other solid waste man, management plan, or they don't have one. And so, uh, consistently, uh, your professionals have been notifying DEQ. The county's got its plan. This is how we want to amend, amend it. And we've notified the municipalities that we think may be under our plan to tell us if they have any issues with this. But there has not been any consistent notification from those municipalities that they are in agreement with the amendment or they are choosing voluntarily not to comment on it or whatever. It's just, uh, there, there are some unanswered issues out there and DEQ is raising that issue. They're saying this needs to be straightened out. My understanding is that one or more of the municipalities that is, that it's uncertain, they are claiming that they are a part of the West Rankin Utility District and that they are covered under that district's plan.
So.
It's uncertain whether the West Rankin Utility District even has a plan. There are, there are a number of balls that are up in the air on this thing. And you've hired Mr. Palmer to take the Denali request and get it through the process of amending our plan. And we're now being told, we really can't do anything with this most recent request until we get all of this stuff back here in the back fixed.
Really?
We need all this information taken care of so we can close the chapter on these prior amendments. Now, if you'll follow the logic, their, DEQ's response is, well, which, which plan are you amending? Are you amending from oh-one or oh-four or oh-seven? We still have open records concerning all of those amendment requests. It's, it's time for us to get this wrapped up solid and tight with DEQ.
This is DEQ.
Finalize this.
So DEQ is using the county to basically close the gap and make all this happen.
DEQ's, uh, uh, I'm, I'm having to guess here. I'm not speaking for them. But their position appears to be, it's not our problem if y'all are not able to get the municipalities to cooperate or participate. That's not our problem. Y'all just need to get it done because we're not going to put the final stamp of approval on anything until that's done.
So we have to get them to participate?
I think we are going to be forced to force an answer, to force an issue.
Okay, so the prior, just say before Denali, the prior ones that we had, and I don't even know which one it was. Are they approved or are the ones before them approved?
They are approved in the sense that they were not objected to.
Okay.
As a municipality, uh, updates their plan, do we have to amend our solid waste plan when they amend theirs?
No, sir. No, sir. And Jay, the, the thing is, to my knowledge, there is not a municipality that has its own separate solid waste management plan.
Okay.
Well, the thing about this though, this wouldn't affect a municipality at all.
No.
So we just need a response from all of them that says they're good with it.
It affects them in that no municipality that I just discussed, except for the two that I mentioned, Pila Hachi being one, I'm not a hundred percent sure of the other, maybe Puckett.
Probably Puckett.
I think it's Puckett. Pila Hachi and Puckett are both participants in the county's solid waste management plan. What that means, Jared, is they don't have to answer to DEQ.
So what you're saying is they don't care what happens anywhere else. They just want everyone to be from Rankin County in the same pool.
Yes, from my understanding.
This Denali, what they're talking about doing is not going to affect the city limits at all. They're not going to be in the city limits.
There is nothing about the proposed use
Right.
that Denali is making that affects any municipality at all.
They're just using this as a, they're using this as a tool then it sounds like.
No.
They're not?
No. If I can help clarify, the municipalities, uh, as we sit here today, they don't even know about the county's activity to amend its own solid waste management plan. Here's what's going on. The municipalities are in a position where they, they have never formally said, we want to be under the county's solid waste management plan. And they don't have their own. They're in a no man's land from, from the, in, from DEQ's perspective. They're in a no man's land. They're not under the counties and they don't have their own. And like I said, they're, they are participating. Uh, all of those municipalities are participating under West Rankin Utility District.
And you're sure that when they formed that agreement with that conglomeration of all the municipalities to get that solid waste contract, that there wasn't some language put in there about a plan?
I, I don't know. I, I'm not aware of any West Rankin Utility District solid waste management plan. I don't think that exists.
Well, let me ask you a question.
I don't do have a lawyer draw that up when they've decided to go with them to get.
Can you, and this is just me speaking, can you get with the West Rankin Authority and whenever they meet and sit down with, and let them know what's going on so we can tie the gap? I mean, if there's any way to tie the gap up.
I think that's what Craig is asking us to do is to pay.
Exactly. What I'd like to do is, is have Chris
Gotcha.
communicate directly with the attorney for West Rankin Utility and say, where is y'all's solid waste management plan?
Okay.
Because if they have one, we, we now have something to give to DEQ.
Right.
And we have something to talk to the municipalities about. All this before you today is to point out to you that the work that is going to be required to get this thing done goes well beyond and was not known at the time the initial authority was given, goes well beyond the scope of the work that you've asked Chris to do.
Well, that's what concerns me. How much are we looking at?
It's seventy-five hundred dollars.
He's capping it there?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed seventy-five.
I, I sat down with Chris and said, before we go back, let's make sure that we ask the guys, we give the guys a number that we feel confident is going to get the work accomplished. We don't need to come back again. He understood that. And so it's a not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars.
Are you keeping up with his hours?
Yes, sir. He sends his bills through me.
I just don't have an automatic seventy-five hundred.
Right. Yeah. Now, this is going to, I think this is going to take several board cycles for us to get through this process.
Would this not have come up if it had not been for the, the Denali?
It would not have, Jared. Well, it would have eventually.
Eventually, because we've done it a few times.
Denali, it would have been some other requester.
Yeah.
Seems like I remember one that was out on Flowood Drive several years ago that, something like this, but it was, they didn't, the DEQ didn't raise the issue on that.
Right. And, and like I said, each time, there's been some reference in the DEQ qualifier in their approvals of the prior activity related to our plan, but there's always been that qualifier about where are the municipalities' participation in this? Don't forget that we need their, their acquiescence in this activity. And we tried to point out to them, we can't force them to say that they're okay with the county's plan because their position is, we don't care. We're not in that plan.
Exactly.
So you see the
Yes.
conundrum here.
Right.
Because it's more county wise, I think part of the reason is.
Right.
That way.
Yep. But anyway. We just need to close the loop, put it to bed, be done.
Well, it'd be good to go ahead and.
I make a motion to approve.
Put it behind us.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Excellent. Item B is authority for the Election Commission to publish a public notice to change the location uh, for the November four, twenty-fourteen election ballot tabulation process. It's also called canvassing from the old courthouse to the emergency operations center assembly room at six oh-one Marquette Road. This is, this is for the November four election. This is not required by law. This, this publication is not required by law. Um, it, it's not required, uh, for any other purpose than we believe that if there, as a matter of courtesy to folks that want to participate in the canvassing process, want to be there to observe, they need to know that we're not going to do it at the old courthouse as normal. We're going to move it down to the. going to move it down to the assembly room. It's more space.
Yeah.
It's a lot easier to secure that. You don't have to worry about folks coming in and out of an active justice court facility. And so there's a lot, it's better parking, there's a lot of...
And not only that, it's right there exactly where we keep the, once they leave from there, that's where we house, I mean, it's right up the road from where we house the machines.
Boxes themselves, the machines. And so it just, it makes sense. This is a request, by the way, that comes from the Election Commission.
Okay.
Didn't originate with us.
Of course, the sheriff, sheriff, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
We cleared all of this with the Secretary of State's office, have an email in my possession where they've approved the relocation of this activity. So we feel like we've got everything nailed down on that.
Especially knowing that the sheriff is over the total control of that, that's pretty good.
They had, they did have, they raised questions about the security of the process, and we assured them.
Right.
We're in good shape.
He's the man over.
We're in good shape.
This is the emergency operations center. EOC.
Well...
Where's the word?
I'm sorry, excuse me. I figured you would.
At this time, we need to conduct a couple of public hearings. So we will open a public hearing on the Kevin Myers rezoning request. It's Erlich Road, District 1. Kevin Myers is requesting to rezone 128 acres on Erlich Road from RE1A to RE1, and he's planning a development for that property, that it will be a private subdivision called Saddle Ridge. It's a gated community with a private road. The subdivision will have restrictive covenants, 2,200 square foot minimum heated and cooled. The preliminary plat has already been approved by the board on 9/14, contingent upon the zoning approval. That's before you today. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Kevin Myers rezoning request. Anyone?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Come, come up.
Please come forward.
Yep.
You'll state your name and address.
Me and Wade, 146 Green Hill, I have some land of John in that property. I also know if that property going to affect my tax or purpose when we rezone. That's all I need to know.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just hang on, he's going to ask you a question.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Just as a quick reminder, the assessor makes the assessment of property on the basis of its use.
Right.
The property that is requested to be rezoned, obviously there's going to be an effect on that property, because its use is eventually going to change. Right now, it's agricultural in nature, hence the RE1A designation on it. When it goes to RE1, if you approve the rezoning, when it goes to RE1, and then there are houses built on it, that's going to be assessed at a residential type of rate. This gentleman's property, I'm assuming, are you intending to change the use of your property in any way? Okay.
No.
So his property will be assessed on the basis of its use. Unless the assessor wants to correct me at this time, I don't see any danger that his assessment is going to change, other than the possible natural increase in value that comes as a result of just being in this community, so.
Right.
Does that answer your question? Your use will remain the same, there should be no effect in your property tax.
Okay.
That answer, did that answer his questions?
That's all I requested, made on that.
Yeah. Well, I knew this is what you're here for, and that's why I make sure. So it won't affect you at all? Okay? Okay.
Anyone else? I don't see anyone else. Mr. President, we'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Item D, Mr. President, is a public hearing on the Sheila Kraft conditional use at 174 South Eagle Ridge, District 1 property. This time, we'll open that public hearing. Ms. Kraft is requesting a conditional use permit to build a second dwelling on the property at 174 South Eagle Ridge. The home will be for her parents. They have medical issues, and she needs to help take care of them. She has approval from the State Department of Health to install the sewer system. It's a three-acre parcel zoned RE1. This time, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Sheila Kraft conditional use permit. Mr. President, I don't see anyone. We'll close that public hearing, and it'd be appropriate to take action.
Okay. I make a motion to approve with the conditions for the additional use would be that once the house is no longer needed, it would not become a rental property, but it would be used as a, like a guest house for family members only.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Is that all you have?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Craig Slay. Ms. Laura Oster, County Administrator.
Thank you, gentlemen. The first item I have this morning is approval of the amended FY14 budget. There's not just a single page and one amount that I can give you, it's contained within all your printouts here, but I can give you some highlights and lowlights, if you'd like. If not, I can go over it, you know, individually.
I don't know if you need to...
We've been over and over.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. The second item is...
Thanks, Sheila.
Authority to pay Motorola in accordance with the first milestone of our contract, which is 25% of contract value upon completion of customer design review in the amount of
See, really, I brought my water.
Well, it's still approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is a little better, is approval of a change order, number four, in a decrease in the amount of $15,151 to the contract on the Rankin County FEMA safe room.
I make a motion to approve. I second the decrease.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
And just a note on that one, we hope to by the November 3 meeting to have all our paperwork in order to do the last payment to Tacoma Hammonds, and to close everything out, once we get a few odds and ends.
Do we still have any glitches at all, as far as the grant or anything from federal level?
We do, but we have an extension to close out the grant work we have until June of 2015, to get all that worked out and get our money back. This will just be, close it out, take possession, and go forward with the use of the building.
Okay.
Sheriff, somebody already done a punch list, is Randy doing the...
We got him tail end, so we wanted to go back to it again, but yeah, I think the major thing right now is the generator issue.
It is, and there was one small sheet rock issue on the inside that I had asked him to look at, and I think that's it. Once we get that cleared up, we'll be good to go.
Great. Wonderful.
So the whole generator issue, you know, I think you talked to folks at MEMA, and they said they'll help pay for it, but...
I went out there, they called and said that from the people, it was up from Randy, and I rode out there with them, and they said, hey, you got too small, more or less we got double the size of the generator.
Oh, MEMA's the one that told you that?
Yeah. And then the construction architect said, well, now, here's a section in this right here saying that all it had to do is run the lights and let it chase them. So now, MEMA's saying this, they're the ones that administered the grant, you're saying this. I said, well, they didn't make the other...
Right.
Yeah.
That's the process.
Okay.
Sheriff's, thank the Lord, the sheriff is continuing to beat drum on this thing, because I think it's got to be answered. We don't need to be in the middle of an architect fussing about MEMA's requirements being wrong.
Well, especially he's saying, the guy at MEMA's saying that we installed it correctly.
We're going to put the two of them together.
The director of grants, so...
Yep.
Good to have.
They said this is almost, they told me this is almost a safe room state, they're saying...
About to like this.
Really?
You already have that schedule?
Yeah, we're, yeah, he just emailed yesterday.
He emailed back.
Okay.
We know that MEMA's ready to meet about it.
All right. Good.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Okay, the next item I have is acknowledgement of a rent adjustment due to the reappraisal on 16th Section lease for tax parcel P14-30-30. That's on the Leesburg Tower, and that is allowed in our, language of our master lease. It's going from 100 to 250 annually.
Hmm. At Leesburg?
Well, it just goes up.
Every seven years, it graduates. They're allowed to do a reappraisal.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
I guess it'd be cheaper moving a tower.
Going back to its original location.
I would think it would be.
That's all I like it for you.
All right, any additional business to be discussed?
Mr. President, if you will allow me, I'm prepared to give y'all a quick update on the Department of Corrections and old JDC.
Okay.
If you want.
That'd be wonderful.
Okay. I'll just hang out here, if that's okay.
There you go.
We made contact with DOC. This is the issue of their use of our building downtown, the West Government Street building downtown, at the corner of AD and Help Me Laser Off Supply Road, I can't ever think of that.
Over.
Over, thank you. They've been in that building for quite some time, about as long as I can remember. And so we just simply pointed out to them that we have the old JDC facility, that the cause, State Department of Health employees are now moving to their alternate location down close to Rogers Dabs, that that space could be available if they were interested. And went into the attorney, he got pushed around to other folks, and they've made contact with me as of yesterday, and they are interested in at least reviewing the building. They are sending a couple of folks, got some dates here. And so there's, the person that I spoke to had a fairly high level of interest in the facility, and sees it as something that would be beneficial to not just the county, but also to the department. And I'm hopeful that that, that that response indicates that even at the highest levels, there's an understanding that this is a good thing to at least explore, but I've been very careful to make sure that they understand that this is the talking stage, and we would like to talk to you all about your interest.
Right. Okay.
That's good. That gives a little...
At least the talking phase is going through there, that's a good thing.
And all the dates are October days.
All the what now?
All the dates that they gave me to do the review are October days.
Okay.
Good deal.
So we're going to try to get it moving...
Fairly quickly.
While we've got some momentum.
That'd be great for downtown Brandon, to get them moved.
Yep.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the update.
All right.
And thank you for following through on all that, so.
Glad to do it.
No.
Any additional, other additional business to be discussed?
I did have something I wanted to bring up. I attended the Motorola meeting, I believe it was Monday morning, down at EOC, where they invited the municipalities and all of them's new communication system, and I think once again, the volunteers all over our county that we count on so much, you know, to protect our lives and property, walked away from it feeling like they might be shorting, because a lot of the equipment that they have, like handheld radios, will be obsolete once the build-out takes place in 12 to 18 months. Now, I think, I think Bob and his department are reaching out to other municipalities that may be switching to this same system, and those radios that they don't need anymore, they're trying to obtain those. And then I guess there's some kind, they can convert them to make them usable on our system, and allocating three or four to this department, and, you know, spread them around to the volunteers as best we can. Well, one volunteer chief that called me, and I guess he was chosen because he's not one to mince words, and he wasn't even from your district.
That's the problem.
He said, you know, when a, when a paid department has five or six radios, they have three shifts. Those five firemen get off that next morning, and another five come in, and they get those same five radios that are in the cradle, and they never leave the station. But most of the volunteers are responding from their house. And if our paging system, which I'm told still has some glitches in it, and even though it notifies the firefighters and EMTs and first responders that there is a call in their area, they still can't communicate back, or won't be able to communicate back to the others responding to that fire or first aid call, unless they're texting while they're going down the road. Well, we certainly don't want to encourage people to be texting and driving, and we need to provide them the essential tools, if it's nothing more than a radio for each of those, and maybe not all the volunteers, maybe not every volunteer on their department, but essentially, I mean, Bob made the comment that, well, you really don't ever need more than five people communicating on any scene. Well, that may be true once you've arrived at the scene, but they kind of need to know and plan how many are responding.
Which five is going to, because you're exactly right, that's the problem being is, you never know if they're, who's going to be available, because they may be on a shift, they may be out of town, they may be somewhere else, it's just not...
Whether it's during the day, whether it's at night, whatever, but, and so my point was, I just kind of wanted to put a bug in the ear that, since it is a 12 to 18 month build-out, that in next budget year, we need to make plans to buy some radios to try and equip our volunteers. Because even if you factor the cost of the radios compared to what it would cost to house full-time firefighters in those, each of those volunteer departments, and I think at one time, there was 21 fire departments in Rankin County, five of them were in municipalities. So we have a whole lot more volunteers than we do full-time paid, and so we can't leave them out in the cold. Bad choice of words, but I just think, let's keep that in mind as we, as we go through this, this process of converting to this new communication system, and let's put some money in the budget next year to help buy radios. We may not be able to buy everybody on every volunteer department one, but we may have to spread it out over a year or two, depending on the cost and all that. But I did want to put that, that word in, that bug in everybody's ear, that that's kind of what some of them came away from that meeting with, and...
Well, I thought that all along, we understood that a lot of the radios that volunteers have are going to be obsolete, and that as we got radios, new people bought them, we were going to take advantage of every opportunity we had from the sheriff's office, the ones that could be an upgrade, and whatever we couldn't get, we would surely purchase so that we wouldn't have volunteers out there without a radio. I don't know that was ever not the plan.
Well, that wasn't how the meeting came across to the volunteers the other morning. That's not what they walked away from the meeting feeling.
Really? Like, we were just going to leave them high and dry, and they wasn't having anything?
Well, that we were going to replace the radio systems and the county-owned equipment, but as far as their handheld mobile radios, they were going to be out on their own, we might be able to get four or five from, for your department. But he's looking at, he's got 20 volunteers that are, that are active, and all of them had radios, so it was, and I think Bob was just kind of hedging the bet that we're going to be able to get some used radios and convert them and pass them out to the volunteers, you know, and then as, as others come available.
But you know, that was kind of why I was pushing all along for our staff to get a good inventory of the whole county, including municipalities, so that we would know how many we're going to have, that we could just do an update on, and how many ultimately we're going to have to purchase.
Well, and Brett may have that information, just so... It just so happened that morning, he wasn't at the meeting, so he couldn't be addressed and, and.
The guy over it wasn't there.
Right. The director took, took.
Took kindly.
Spot.
Heat on it.
Hey, Brian, how many do you think you have left to purchase that you plan on purchasing? Left? How many do we need for volunteers? Like 150?
I don't know. I thought you asked Brett to gather that information.
Well, they got it. Actually, Scotty's the one that got it all, I think.
Can I say, I was hoping the president would swap this over, that the old system, that this is all going to work, even the old stuff's going to work for a period of time, that we have more time before we have to swap all the radios out.
I thought so, too.
So our old system will work, and, but both systems will be working at the same time.
I think just for a short period of time, though.
We just, they couldn't give us.
Yeah, we got two years, I think, to get it done.
Yeah.
But that's, I guess that's what Mr. Johnson's saying, is, you know, as we look into this, we really need to press Bob and Brett to make sure we've got an accurate count, along with the volunteers out there, so we don't, all of a sudden in two years, say, hey, guess what? Now we got to buy 300 radios.
You got 16 volunteer departments. That's 10 apiece.
So you're looking at 160?
If it was 160.
Yeah.
Well, some of them already have radios that can qualify.
I think that's a, that's probably an, an outside number.
Right. We just need to press, get, make sure our EOC gets that accurate number of what, from municipalities, from the sheriff, what all that's going to be transferred down, or if there's any.
Are you saying 10 after the ones that?
Yes, sir.
The sheriff hands down and whoever else.
I was giving a round number. If, if, if we assume that three or four can be converted, refurbished, converted and passed out, if he's got 50, that's three among the 16 departments, so, you know, another 10 should cover a good number of the volunteers. There may be a few short, but.
And that's not to mention the ones that we possibly get from municipalities.
Right. Could be some from municipalities, for sure.
I guess unless we do check, circle the problem.
Yeah.
Keep a, keep a check with them, because I know the other day I saw they, somebody turned in, one of the, I think she turned in 100 something radio, I wish I had a problem back then.
Oh, heck, yeah. Yes, you, you talk to Missy all the time, just like I do, too.
I'll call her.
Yeah, absolutely.
Especially if we know that they can be flashed and know that they're going to be used, can be used. So, yeah.
It can be huge.
Huge. Yeah, if you'll, if you'll catch up with her, that'd be great. Okay, anything additional business, anything else?
Before, before we go into executive session, I, I just want to say, I know y'all are about to do a story on Rodney being appointed, but I think it's important, we thank everybody that submitted their name for consideration, and we're, Rankin County's honored to have a good list of people to pick from.
Yeah, it's huge, because it's a, it's a big seat to fill, as in the reservoir is huge, and it's, it's like a municipality in itself, no matter what, and though we'll miss Mr. Brown, he did well for seven years. Unlike Mr. Bishop, you know, we did have a, quite a big list to draw from, and just for someone to put their name on that list speaks volumes, and we appreciate that, the people that did put their names in it for, because it's, it's a big job and big responsibility, and I'm hoping that Mr. Keith understands that. I, I've talked to him on numerous occasions, along with others, and, in fact, this man down here has probably been the longest member of the Board of Supervisors, understands how viable, and, and we are the ones that basically that people have to get to, you know, the closest that people can get to, to talk to about any problem, so, you know, I do appreciate everyone that did enter their names into the, into the arena, so. Anything else?
I have an added for executive session personnel.
Okay, do I have a motion to discuss the need?
I'll make that motion, discuss the need, go on executive session.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson.
Say.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any more questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank y'all.
Hey, John.
Hey, Renee. What's going in front of Farmington Station?
Ron, I've been on there doing support, I came for that second vision, but it's down for.
Hey, how you doing? Just that new section.
The, the latest add-on they're doing? What size homes are those?
So it's that, and I think it's going to be that.
It's just going to be houses. Okay. Uh-oh. I'm meeting with the Souts today. Yes. Oh, let me tell you, Lynn, yesterday, she, she said that Mr. and Mrs. Smith came in to see you, and I called back, and I'm, can I speak to Smith? You got the wrong number. She said it's south. I was like, oh, okay.
Hey, Miss Judy, please excuse my laziness. Heard anything from Larry? He doing okay?
I'm meeting with her today, and I got to see if they want to talk to me, what I'm across the street is, which we're.
Somebody, one of the attorneys was doing more than boxes.
I mean, it's kind of like, you know, there, there, there probably was down here, may not be happy about how my father's hand or the pocket of it.
Hey, me, I want it. I'm going.
I think, I think it's, it's.
When they, they own the other part, we're putting down the rest.
They did several.
Really? What are they, Mr. Parker, that? Yeah.
They've got a, one of them is, they got a ditch that they wanted to cut, and now they want it filled back up.
What?
Yes. Where are you talking about? Down at Old Town Road, not that lot.
How are you?
They wanted this ditch put in.
In front of their property?
Once we put in, now they decided they don't.
After we're finished with the project. So how do we do away with it?
Basically what you do.
How are you doing? And it's, you know, it's.
Negative, it impacts our project?
But we keep.
He's doing it pretty good. I know, he's had a good day, he's got.
Well, he stepped in off this.
Well, he paid for them to do the ditch, didn't he?
Well, I see.
He used to fellow money on that job.
They talked some product on business with a little bit.
I hadn't looked at it yet, so I was curious what it is that I might get up with.
We could, we could do it, kind of.
We're quite just going to participate in front of, which means it's all kind of, you got to pay the taxes.
How much you want to talk to him?
Any second.
I don't know. I had.
It's, it's got to be red.
So we put a ditch in front of.
He sure will.
Yeah.
He has to be.
He will not, he, he won't.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.[1628.13]